Good evening, I'm calling to order the Concord Township Board of Trustees, first of two public hearings, the date is April 6, 2002. Hearing number one-
2022.
2022, thank you. Hearing number one is for zoning amendment application number 2022-1 by Concord Preserve LLC, requesting a zoning resolution map amendment from the current zoning district of Town Hall Neighborhood to R1 Residential District for the following properties owned by Concord Preserve LLC located on Concord-Hamden Road, current permanent parcel number 08-A-014-0-00-076-0.
You're in the hearing.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Rose, can you confirm that the legal notice was published in a timely manner?
I can, Madam Chair, and it was published in the News Herald.
Thank you. So I'd first like to ask our zoning director, Ms. Freeman, to come up and give a little background information on the application, please.
Sure. Okay, good evening. So as you stated, this was an application submitted by a property owner to requesting a rezone. This property is located on the north side of Concord-Hamden Road between Auburn and Ravenna Road. The zoning districts and land uses around the site, I'll just give you a little bit of orientation. To the north of the six acres that is being requested to be rezoned this evening is Town Hall Neighborhood District, there's vacant land and some residential uses to the north. There's Manufacturing District to the west and to the south across the street on the south side of Concord-Hamden Road. We have residential uses, R3 and also R1 districts. To the east, there is some Town Hall Neighborhood District and an R1 vacant land, and also there's a vacant house that still remains there. The, in your packets, you also received recommendations from both the Lake County Planning Commission and also the Concord Township Zoning Commission, both recommending approval of the district change. And I guess that's really about it, and would like the applicant to come up, he can explain what he's proposing to do.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. What I'm requesting to do is to rezonate to residential.
Name and address.
Name and address. George Davis, I actually am a Concord resident as well, 7962 Butler Hill Drive, Concord, Ohio. But I'm here tonight to request the rezone from Town Hall Neighborhood to residential. First of all, I want to say I don't, I think the trustee should not take a rezone lightly, especially when you're, you know, going to residential, but I think it's more than merited in this case. In the past couple of years, two other parcels were removed from the Town Hall Neighborhood and rezoned to residential as well. The one is the parcel immediately to the east of my parcels, and the other is across the street to the south, which I also own. So in that spirit of maybe realizing that Town Hall Neighborhood is now over in the Auburn corridor, I think this would be a good use of that property. You know, the rest of the land to the north is pretty wetland, you know, there's a lot of wetland, it never really was going to be able to be developed, there's a lot of grade in wetland and you require a pumping station for the sewer. So I think at the street, rezoning this to residential probably makes the most sense. I am here to answer any questions anyone might have, and I think three time.
You want me to start?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for coming in tonight, Mr. Davis. I did watch the entire public hearing for the zoning meeting on March 1st to get an idea of the scope of the project and some of the issues that some of the residents may have had some concern with. And since then, I've fielded some phone calls and some emails, both for and against the rezone. But it seems like the majority of the questions, and there's a few, some of them have to deal with the issue of what's addressed the residents that are already developed on the south side of the street. You mentioned in the hearing that those are rented at this point in time, and there is an intention down the road to make those individually owned condominiums?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, and I'm happy to elaborate on that.
If you would.
Yeah, so I purchased the land to the south after it was rezoned residential, and in that residential district, you're allowed to do duplexes. Quite honestly, coming out of 2008, doing condominiums is very difficult, the banks pretty much found on it, they'll let you do one building, you gotta have 51% sold to be able to start your next building. If you're doing duplexes, that means you gotta have both of them sold. So building that out as condos initially means it's probably a five or a six-year project, unfortunately. But the way the banking system works, if I say I'm gonna lease those, right, and I like to use the word lease, not rent, because, you know, it is a one-year term, and these rent for nearly $2,000 a month.
Right.
But, so what that allows me to do is get one loan to build all eight of those duplex that's on the south side, and on the north side, I'll be doing the same for those six duplexes.
Excuse me one second, can you please mute yourself on the phone? Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Yep, and so then, so my attorney and my survey are working on the condo plat for the south side, which we'll be bringing to the township through the process, because you can take a residential district and condo minimize it, which we will be doing very similar to the condo project that's off of Auburn. And then market keeps improving like it is, you know, I would intend to start selling them almost immediately off as condominiums.
Okay, so what would the timeline look like?
Well, I can't promise any timeline, because, you know, like, who would have thought there'd be a war that we're worried about right now?
Right.
But, you know, as long as, as long as the economy keeps improving, then, you know, I'm gonna condoize them now, right now, I'll just be the only owner of those condominiums.
Okay.
But once the time is right, that would be the intent.
But that's your intention, if this was to be rezoned on the north side also?
Yep.
Because that was, seemed to be one of the most, one of the biggest issues and concerns was, you know, are these gonna be maintained as rentals down the road, or are they gonna, you know, are they gonna move to be individually owned condos?
Yeah.
So if that's your intention, I appreciate that. One of the other issues that was addressed as far as the property to the north was the gas well.
Yes.
Was it safe to build a dwelling? I think your measurement is a little over 107 feet maybe from the, from the gas well, is that correct?
Correct.
I know there's, and I did a little bit of research, I'm not really well-versed in it, but it seems like there's some federal guidelines that recommend, you know, 300 feet. State of Ohio, I believe, recommends at least 100, which you're within. Do you have any additional guidance or information on, you know, because it talked about, you know, some concern about, you know, air quality, water quality, things of that nature?
Yeah, so first of all, the state of Ohio leaves it up to each individual community to establish those, and, but believe it or not, there are many places where those wells are as close to like 10 or 11 feet from a house, right? I know of a few in Painesville City, for example. But, yeah, we designed this to try to make sure we stay more than that 100 feet away that the state of Ohio recommends, and so we're in excess of that, I feel totally comfortable, you know, building the units there. And it is of note that I don't own the gas well, right? So the mineral rights were, you know, were sold some time ago, and so it's not my gas well, we'll be relocating the driveway, right? And the stuff remain, you know, all the equipment, everything will remain on the back parcel.
Okay, and this is approximately six acres, correct?
Correct.
And the other remaining property?
Oh, Heather, help me with that, the back parcel.
It's just under 11 acres.
Okay.
11 acres.
Give me one minute.
Mr. Davis, I recall, I think I heard, and I believe I've spoken with the gentleman that you ended up sort of settling out on that land over there, and it's my understanding, I don't know if you can confirm this or not, but on that 10.9, we'll call it 11 acres, his intention is to do nothing with it, is that correct?
Correct.
Or not develop it in any way, and he's gonna use the land, because it's his, but he isn't building anything on it.
Correct. The gentleman lives on Proudie, and he specifically didn't want me to make it into a housing development, that this piece of property was in a fairly well-known bankruptcy in the area that's going on for in excess of a decade. There was an auction, then there was a lawsuit after the auction, right? And we ended up in federal appeals court, and ultimately the settlement was the land that would be difficult for me to develop anyways, right? He would take, and I would take the front parcels, and yeah, he's a resident of the township that lives on Proudie Road and intends to do nothing with it other than enjoy it for himself.
He'd be Ravenna Road, because his property-
Oh, yeah.
You want to make sure-
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I got it.
Because he's adjacent to it, so he's sharing that property.
Correct. Yeah, he is adjacent to it, correct, I misspoke, he is on Ravenna. And his son is actually, a couple houses up for him are on Ravenna as well.
Any other questions?
I don't, I don't know, I don't have any questions at this time.
So, Mr. Davis, just to confirm, you plan on building six duplexes?
Yeah, six residential duplexes-
Okay.
-identical to the stuff across the street, but with basements.
And then explain the driveway plan, was there-
The, oh, the, so there's a, the existing gas well driveway sort of runs at an angle, right, that goes onto some of my land. My agreement with the other party is I will relocate that so it's straight on his, basically the flagpole of his flag lot.
And the area behind there, which is still Town Hall, or Mr. Lovick's property, that is a lot of wetlands again, a lot of sewage problems?
Well, it's wetlands and the sewer is higher than the land itself, so like, you know, I'll be honest with you, when I, when I was, when I first thought I won the auction, I was gonna try to put a residential subdivision in there, and it was gonna be very expensive because, you know, you need a pump station, right? And Lake County Utilities is not in favor of pump stations, so it requires you to do a bunch of private roads and private pump stations. So it was gonna get difficult, and maybe it was a blessing in disguise that, you know, he felt the auction was unfair, and we worked out this settlement, so the land that really was very tough to develop will remain undeveloped, and the land that can be developed will be developed.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Davis?
No.
Okay, no other questions on the board?
I have, I have one. If we were to not grant the rezone, what is your, any thoughts about that property and what it's, what it's good for under the current zoning?
So the interesting thing there is, I really haven't thought about that, you know, I guess my, my feeling is the, you know, and I want to say this with the utmost respect for the trustees, but my feeling is the precedent has been set with the parcels to the south and to the east, so I would have to go back to the drawing board, right? I mean, I'm a developer, not a landholder, so I would, you know, definitely come back with something different, but I think this would be in more harmony with the stuff to the south, and, you know, the intent of the owner of the property to the east is to tear that old toss down, and, you know, they're attempting to sell those lots right now, so I feel it would be in more harmony to be developed that way.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, I will open it up to the audience, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up, state your name and address, and give us your thoughts?
David.
Please.
Hi, my name is Michael Wooden, I live at 1121 Proudie Road, Concord, Ohio. I was listening to a little bit of what he said, the last part kind of got me, he says a developer and a landholder. Well, if he's not a landholder, why is he trying to build those standards on Lakeshore, right there, Lost Angeles, I grew up in North Willoughby, I don't like those there, but I don't know, brother's councilman, but I don't like rentals in Concord. The board members can't say it, but we don't need rentals. I mean, we have enough problems already. If he's going to build them to sell them, hey, I'm in for the rezoning, that's fine, because I like seeing stuff bought. How's it being sold? People moving in, and that's great, Concord needs it. But if it's gonna just be built, if he's not a holder, what does he want to do, move into the management? He's got the standards on Lakeshore is gonna be started, which those are nice, if I looked at them the other day, I just went, I got houses on the, right there, I can see them right from there. But those going down 608, in my opinion, they're cluster homes, they're ugly, I don't like them. And my neighbors are all elderly, people that are in Quail Hollow, Jora Mail and there's a couple others that I couldn't get to to bring here tonight, because it was, I know stuff gets put out, but everybody works, I mean, I had to take off work, I work second shift, but I don't want rentals in Concord. You guys, not being you guys, meaning the trustees can't differentiate that, Concord doesn't need rentals. We need people buying properties, we have enough rentals already, and to my opinion, leave it commercial. But if he's going, if his intent is to sell them, then I'm all for rezoning it residential and building them, selling them. I mean, the guys coming here, building nice houses, I like what he said about making a subdivision. They put 300,000, $400,000 houses in there, people are gonna move in there. But he said there's something at issue with the pump station, I understand that, but if he's gonna buy them and they think all of a sudden, what is it, pro-build, pro-build's building, I mean, I've been noticing more, my aunt lives on Gorge Road, they're building a new house there, I like that, that looks great, and there's another lot, a lot down by that 22 Double Deuce Acres, they're clearing away that land, I don't know what's gonna go in there, but the rentals don't change his own. But if he's gonna say he's gonna sell them, how are we gonna sell them? I mean, a lot of developers can say, okay, well, they're building, but what if he wants to move out and build them and get into property management? Well, right away, he's got condos there, he's got the other ones that are across the street, to me, they're just, they're just prefab, you put them up, $1,800 a month, that sounds good, but who's gonna keep doing it? The housing crisis, I do mortgages. I mean, I've got people paying $40,000, $50,000 over for houses, it's not gonna last. So if you can't sell them, not to make a profit, when are you gonna sell them? So I just, if he's, if they're gonna be rentals, my opinion doesn't want them. My neighbors, Mr. Creekcraft, the Shoses, the Gillespies, they couldn't make it here tonight, but I could probably get a petition for 200 people to say they don't want it, because a lot of people don't have time to come with this. I mean, I just, I looked up, it's like, God, I had to quit work to do that, but in my opinion, if they're gonna be sold as residential properties, I'm for the rezoning. But if they're gonna be rentals, I don't want any more rentals in Concord, that's my opinion, and I don't think Concord needs those.
Okay.
Leave it just the way it is for commercial.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wooden. Anyone else in the audience, just ma'am, please come on up. Good evening.
My name is Lana Blatnik, I live at 6435 Tulip Way in Concord. I've been a resident for 44 years, and I love it here. You wouldn't have to do anything but plow the streets in the winter and do a little police work once in a while, make me happy. What you're planning, or what this gentleman, George Davis, is planning, that's a beautiful piece of property. I don't know if any of you have ever walked it, or gone down into the low end of it, but it is, it's incredibly beautiful. And with all the things that we've discussed about what can we do with the property in Concord, we would love to have a park. And if you had the money stashed somewhere, why don't you consider purchasing that property? Not just, you can laugh, go ahead, Amy, go ahead, smile.
I'm, I'm not laughing.
Okay, don't cry, either, don't cry. Okay, I gotcha, I gotcha. I've done that too. It would be something so beneficial to not just the adults, but to their families and to the children of this township. And before Mr. Davis plants something in that front area there, that could be a baseball field, it could be a tennis court, you could do anything you wanted on that property, and then make the back half of it, which another person owns it, correct? Am I correct in that? Yeah. Make him a deal, and you're not gonna get back there and build anything serious, and he could still, he could still use it, because he's a Concord Township resident. So I'd love you to consider that.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone on the phone that would like to speak?
Sure. This is Vanessa Parset, 11705 Cali Court, and I would like to say a couple things regarding this. First, when you look on the Concord website, it states, "Zoning is the regulation of the use, location, height, number, and size of land, buildings, or structures within a specified zoning or area of the community. Its purpose is to protect property values and preserve the desired character of a community while providing for orderly growth and uniform development." So I would state that every part of this rezoning that is in front of you goes against Concord's stated zoning definition. If you would grant this rezoning, you would further reduce the semi-rural character of the township on this importantly-traveled road, you would do spot zoning, you would be putting homes next to a manufacturing-zoned area, you would reduce the precious small amount of business-zoned land that Concord has to keep our taxes low, and it even has an active gas well on the property, which could explode and ease your residents. So the question of the night is, will you, as trustees, support citizens, keep Concord semi-rural and keep taxes low by voting no on this rezoning, or will you vote yes to support a developer's plan? So let me go through some of these details so that you understand it fully, they're not just phrases. The first is that the application, the applicant wants to rezone a few parcels, single amount for residential use in an otherwise business-zoned parcel, and this is not appropriate in the Town Hall Neighborhood, which is, which is what it is a part of. There's Manufacturing to the west, the Interstate 90 to the north, and business-zoned property all along Ravenna to the east. We know that spot zoning is to a specific parcel when the rezoning is at odds with the current zoning restrictions, and we know that it makes, it always asks for an unjustified exception to a parcel or parcels within the district. And Chris Galloway, when he was the trustee, identified the other parcel that was zoned residential in the middle of this Town Hall Neighborhood zoning as spot zoning, said the applicant was here before us, I voted against it because I didn't think it should be spot-zoned out, that saying said we come back to the best use of the land. Further, second point, it has gas wells in close proximity to the proposed home. It's very disconcerting to realize and hear that nobody in that room has a basic understanding of gas wells, active gas wells, and how you can build homes near them. OGNR does not, I repeat, not, provide any guidance on how far a home can be built to a gas well. It only says how close a gas well can be built next to a home, and that is 100 feet. So you can build a home zero feet from a gas well. I repeatedly said this over the years, that Concord needs to establish zoning to determine how far they want to have a house go to a existing gas well, but thus far, you haven't done that, so it remains at zero. Furthermore, even in Ohio, these condensate tanks explode, and in Ohio, one exploded and landed 300 feet away, which is significant for all of the proposed homes that you have there. So you're putting residents in harm's way if you would rezonate to residential in this property. Another point, back in 2004, Concord's comprehensive plan identified that we only have a small amount of business land, and we need to keep all of it in order to keep our taxes low. And so what is the best use of the property? It's critical that we keep all of it business, including the Town Hall Neighborhood, which are supposed to be a soft commercial use between Manufacturing and that area, and some of the residential uses to the, to the south. And when the last time they tried to rezonate, trustee Galloway explained that the Town Hall Neighborhood was a good goal, that this goal of a soft commercial use was good, that I think the goals behind that were correct, and I think that they're primarily successful. Nothing has changed, it's just the developer wants now to make money and build rental duplexes, and he can't zone for rental or home owner occupied and owned homes, there is no zoning for that. If you zone for residential, it can be rented, and it can always be rented. So you can't say that it's going to turn over to occupied, owner occupied homes within a certain amount of time when the bank says it's right and the conditions are right and all that, that's just not true, you just have no idea. So I think that it's really critical that, in the best interest of the township or residents, that you don't allow residential on an area that can generate business income, because we need that business income to keep property taxes low, that you don't allow homes next to property that is zone Manufacturing, that you don't allow homes to be put in harm's way by allowing them near an active gas well, that you don't allow spot zoning on the property, that you don't give up on good zoning practices, and most importantly, that you don't destroy even more semi-rural feeling in Concord. The residents that I've spoken to, and I've spoken to a lot of them, ask that you vote no on this application, on their side and not on the developer's side. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have one other, somebody asked me to read something, and it sounds like he wasn't able to make the meeting, so this is a short comment from Bob Zane. Let me see, he says that as an experienced real estate broker, appraiser, and also a 40-year concerned resident of Concord Township, feels that any common sense or rational thinking would come to the conclusion that spot zoning, which this would be if approved, would set a terrible precedent going forward and be a detriment to the growth of the township. So I guess he's asking you to vote no as well. So that's it, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comments. Mr. Davis, would you care to answer any questions from, or answer to any comments?
There's always so many comments. But, you know, I have stated what my intention is, that's the same intention at the project that was mentioned in Willoughby. So, you know, I, I, obviously I disagree with their comments, I feel like the spot zoning precedence has already been set, and that, you know, plans change over time, right? And that piece of property has been marketed since, I believe, the 60s, and-
1961.
Correct, and it has never been developed, and there's usually a reason for that, because developers like to develop, right? And in this case, there's a lot of slope to that property, there's over 30 feet of slope, which is very expensive to level, there's the sewer issue that I mentioned, right? And then there's the wetland issue, so wetlands are about a, you know, $100,000 an acre of credit to buy, so it's pretty expensive to try to mitigate all those wetlands that are there.
So, Mr. Dondon, for the discussion-
Yes, so I will start out by responding, you know, Mr. Wooden, I appreciate your comments here at the podium, and I realize your concern about rentals in the township. I believe, and I know Mr. Davis, and I believe his intentions are clear, that he plans to proceed as he's indicated here on the record, as far as making those individualized owner condominiums.
In regards to our caller, I have several notes-
In regards to our caller, I have several notes here, so I'm going to go through them. You know, I believe this, this board, you know, takes each situation and evaluates it independently, because we will all agree that we do what's best when we come to that decision-making process and that time to make a decision, to do what's in the best interest of the citizens of Concord Township. So I clearly understand there's going to be differences of opinion, and I don't think it's indicative of one opinion or the other, whether or not that is a show of whether or not the township supports a citizen or supports the developer. We, we do our due diligence, and we evaluate each of these requests individually. As far as the indication that previously, previous board member Chris Galloway made is that this was spot zoning, I believe, back in 2017, and I reviewed the, the transcripts from that meeting. I did look up the, the classic definition of spot zoning, which is the process of singling out a small parcel of land for use classification, totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of each such property and to the detriment of the owners. So I did reach out to Mr. Galloway, and he indicated to me that this is quite a different situation than when he indicated previously in 2017 that it was spot zoning. That specific piece of, that small parcel of property was going to be carved out into a, a smaller piece, and that, in his opinion, was true spot zoning. Here, we have a parcel of...
Mr. Dondorfer, I, I think just to add a little bit of clarity to that point, I also, because I was in the zoning commission at that time, okay? And so I made the recommendation to the Board of Trustees at that point. That was not for the property in question that we're talking about tonight. That was for a different parcel. That was for a two-acre parcel, which I think was the Spears property. So we're, we're not talking about the same chunk of land, just to be clear.
When we're talking about orderly...
I'm sorry. I think it was Stephanie Arnold's property that, that was the two acres.
Next to the church.
Right next to, in between the church and the property that Mr. Davis said is now our one.
Yes. Chris was the dissent, Mr. Galloway was the dissenting.
But it was our one. So it's our one there, in that section, next to.
Right. So my point is that, that was, that, that appears to me to be more in line with spot zoning versus the statement that this was spot zoning. I mean, we're talking about orderly growth and uniform development. You know, I looked, I pulled in that vacant building today and sort of walked the property before a meeting that I had earlier. And when we talk about orderly growth and uniform development, I, I, I see it much more complimentary and harmonious to have some similar duplexes or housing there than I do seeing a, a strip building with maybe loading docks or some type of light industry or light commercial property. To me, it seems like it, it doesn't, it doesn't complement the area that well. Now, when we talk about the Town Hall Neighborhood District, and there's been several zoning changes since 1961 on this, on this piece of property. Rezoned in '73, '79, 2010, the comprehensive plan in 2004 brought in the, the Town Hall Neighborhood District. And that has since changed. The focus for the township, the Town Hall, Town Hall Center is now over at, at, at Capitol. So, you know, as, as time goes on, you know, things change, plans change, what's best for the community change, what may or may not be best for the community changes. So, you know, I'm not sure that focusing and just on the 2004 comprehensive plan and the, you know, the Town Hall Neighborhood District is, is, it seems to be just not the focus of the, the grand scheme of what's best for Concord Township. You know, the gas well, I, you know, I, if there's going to be housing there, you know, the state of Ohio has indicated that, you know, it has to be within 100 feet. That, that's what they deem safe, safe. I know the Ohio Department of Natural Resources does not regulate that. But if there was manufacturing there, I mean, there's going to be a building there, there's going to be people there, it's going to probably be within 100 feet or, or less of, of the gas well if it's, somebody builds on it with what it's owned now. I just think, you know, we talked about good zoning practices. I mean, Morgan, you've been with zoning for a long time. Amy and I are still, are, are learning and doing our due diligence over the last few years. But again, I think, you know, I will go back and, and, and state that, you know, this board evaluates each circumstance that's brought before us individually. We do quite a bit of diligence and, and research before we decide how we're going to vote or, or decide on this. And, you know, in my opinion, I, I think Mr. Davis hit it on the head. I think, you know, what's harmonious in this area around, right now, I see is, is potentially, you know, something similar to what's there already versus some type of strip building or something with a loading dock or, or some type of light industrial, like, like commercial business. So those are my comments.
Did you care to add any comments?
I guess I just want to point of order, are we going to be done with public comment, then we can...
Yes. So I believe we are finished with public comment, so I'd like to close the public portion.
I, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? So that closes the first public hearing. Are we ready? No, go ahead.
I'll, I'll throw in a couple of comments, and when we get to the vote, I can kind of expand on my thoughts. But just to hit on a couple of things, I want to, boy, this goes back a while. So early in my stead on the zoning commission, we took this up. So I was part of developing this zoning district. That was, according to my book, it looks like it took effect in 2009. So we took that up in 2018, about the time that, that property came up for rezone, the two-acre parcel that we were talking about. There was conversation, the zoning commission held some work sessions to discuss the fact that the Town Hall Neighborhood and the Town Hall Common zoning uses really had, and used in that eight-year period of time. And so I think the former board charged us with taking up a conversation and coming to it. And that is at a point where actually the zoning commission had added a public comment section. So we had several work sessions to which we didn't get any public comment about how to evolve this or take a look at it, because at one point, it was thought that this would be more of a town center thing, but then obviously the evolution came. So it's like, do we need to change this or whatever? And there was really no conclusion reached. Speaking to the property being, you know, commercial, so I, I went back and dusted off my zoning hat and looked at the, the classification. So Town Hall Neighborhood and Town Commons are listed in the commercial section of the zoning, but if you, if you thin through the use table, you realize that light manufacturing is not something that that presently, that land, that property could be used for. It's the, the kinds of things that are there are, in my experience on the JED board, would lead to believe that they're, they're not generating a lot of tax dollars in JED. So in, in fact, in fact, business right now wouldn't generate any more taxes because we're only talking property taxes. So we'd have to go through the process of expanding the JED down to that, which would be multi-board approvals, both Concord and Paines would have to agree. Then we'd have to, then we'd have to add the property, and of course, I think we all are aware that the township's currently litigation with adding property to JED. So that's not a, a simple function. So property taxes alone, commercial to residential, aren't gonna be a lot different. In fact, right now, the commercial properties that are over there are not pulling in the tax dollars that I estimate, based on what Mr. Davis's property is now pulling in, would generate. So we might actually be financially better off with those as the duplexes than we would manufacturing, unless we could stretch the JED all the way down there. And if we did get the JED down there, then we would need to look at the kinds of things that we either have high net profits and/or a significant payroll. And if you look at the use table there, I'm not really seeing the things that we currently permit that. So I think it's, to call it commercial zoning is a stretch. I, I would say commercial light with even an asterisk after that, because it's, it's not something that's really poised to generate. It's not, it's not poised to generate a lot of income if it were even included in the JED. And it's been rezoned, as I said, since 2009. So the determination was made a while back that that was not going to be a heavy commercial property. I just kind of wanted to take that one on. Again, I, I would, I would also disagree with the spot zoning thing in this case, because we're looking at something that is, you know, there's, there's, there's uses that are consistent in the area. And, you know, I would also say that, yeah, the case that would, to which Mr. Galloway referred, yeah, that was a one piece of property that had, had that and was for one application. And that was at also the time we were taking up this, what is this area going to do? And there was a lot of ambiguity. And I believe the zoning commission unanimously said no to that zoning, and then it ascended the trustees, to which Mr. Galloway was the dissenting vote, and it was rezoned as, as residential. So I think that history is important to understand when you take up this decision. So I guess those are all my comments for now, and I can elaborate further when we get to voting in the regular meeting.
Okay. And I, I would just add, you know, thank you to the residents that came and spoke, the resident on the phone. We appreciate your, your concerns. And as Mr. Dondorfer said, we do take those concerns into our decision-making. So we appreciate that. But I, I, I sort of agree that, you know, we really haven't had revenue in that, that area since 1961, right? I feel that, you know, we don't know, there has been little interest in any commercial property or commercial building over there. I think we know what we're getting with Mr. Davis's duplexes on the other side is, in regards to uniform development, I think that does add to uniform development within the township and still maintains orderly, orderly growth and a semi-rural appeal. You know, as Mr. McIntosh said, looking at the, the money we would make from manufacturing or commercial versus residential, you know, you can't really make that guarantee. We, we don't know what, we haven't had any interest there since it was rezoned. So...
I think another important point, and Mrs. Passak made this comment, with respect to the rentals, if, if Mr. Davis went in there and made them owner bought, you know, acquired, I, I, when I first moved back to Concord as an adult, I bought a condominium, bought the current house I'm in, and I got stuck. I wasn't able to sell the condo, so I rented it. So it was an owned condo that I turned into a rental. So that, there's no regulation of rented. I mean, you, I, if I'm unable to sell my house when I move again later this year, renting that house is an option. So, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of condos in Concord. We know that. We have quite a few developments. We have very few apartments, but there's quite a few rental properties in the community. Like I said, any, any property owner can turn around and sort of rent their, their property. So to me, I think the rental thing is a bit of a, it's, it's there, it's present. We're looking at relatively small number of units here. I think that's an important factor. And I've dealt with a couple of developers on this. I know we've had questions before about condo financing, and that's not the first time I've run across this, and it is a post-2008, 2009 housing crisis thing. It's, you know, who can make sense of lending? I, I certainly understand. So, and again, our, our role in zoning isn't really to, to take into consideration developers' economics. It's really to take a look at the zoning and fit in the community. They're in the business of being developers, we're not. So I would just add that comment.
Okay. Any last comments, Mr. Dondorfer?
No.
Okay. So we already closed the hearing, I believe, so we can move on to the second public hearing? All right. So hearing number two is zoning text amendments to the Concord Township zoning resolution as initiated by the zoning commission. Amendment number one, amend section 16.24, which is permitted density and open space requirements to add new section F, environmental restoration plan. Amendment number two, amend section 16.24 CE to change landscape plan requirement to environmental restoration plan. And then amendment number three, amend section 6.02 prohibited uses to add new section J, medical marijuana retail dispensaries. Heather, would you like to add any comment before we...
Sure. I can give some, some background. So we have kind of two different subjects here combined under one public hearing. The zoning commission, if you recall, in 2021, did a pretty extensive review of the RCD section of the zoning resolution, which this board ultimately adopted. And one of the last pieces that they wanted to work on and didn't have the information for at that time was the idea of this including an environmental restoration plan. So any developer that might be looking at submitting a new residential conservation development district, who is going to be proposing open space where the open space has already been previously disturbed, or they know in order to construct the development, they might need to disturb some of that, would be required to submit an environmental restoration plan. So this first amendment addresses what that plan components would be and what would need to be submitted to the township as part of their preliminary plan approval with the request to rezone the property. The second amendment goes along with this as well. We used to have language in here that talked about developers submitting a landscape plan for impacting the open space. This is changing the language to reflect this new environmental restoration plan component. And then the last, the third amendment, the zoning commission started to talk about the medical marijuana retail dispensaries. As you know, the Ohio revised code does permit townships and other municipalities to regulate those. And at this time, the zoning commission was recommending that we prohibit medical marijuana retail dispensaries. So those are the amendments that are in front of you this evening. Also included the recommendations of both the Lake County Planning Commission and also the zoning commission for you as well. If there's any questions on that, I'm happy to answer.
Questions from the board on the...
I just have one. I noticed that in the planning commission's recommendations, bullet point one was to be consistent in terminology. Have you...
Yes. That, number one, we did adopt, the zoning commission did take up that adoption or that recommendation. There was a small, yes. And that's already been incorporated into this language for you. That was actually part of amendment number two.
Okay.
So we did make that change to be consistent.
And just out of curiosity, did you, when, when the zoning commission worked through the medical marijuana amendment number three, did you, I know you a lot of times compare other zoning communities, or do you guys do, was there any research or sort of background conducted that drove them and electing to exclude that? Or was there...
There was, we did look at what some other communities were doing. There was some discussion amongst the board about, well, maybe not prohibiting it and trying to identify certain districts. They couldn't come to consensus on maybe where those districts might be. And then at the same time, we were kind of going over this, there was some additional discussion at the state level that was going to talk about recreational, and the board was kind of like, well, maybe we just kind of prohibit it for now, wait and see what happens with, if recreational ever becomes something that we can regulate, and then we have a starting point. So, I mean, we, we did look at what some other communities were doing, and it's different, you know, everyone's doing, either they're allowing them or they're not. So that's what they decided to recommend to you guys.
And can you comment on the Lake County Planning Commission's number two and number three?
Oh, sure. So Lake County was asking, number two says define what the maintenance plan is and what they expect the developer to do with the maintenance plan. The board wanted to, that, that would be very difficult to define specifically, because each piece of property would have a different proposed environmental restoration plan. So depending on how they are going to propose to restore it, the maintenance plan would vary. So they thought that it would be too restrictive and wanted to leave it up to the consultant that would prepare that plan for the developer to give flexibility on, on, on the specifics of that maintenance plan. So they opted not to give a strict definition of that. And the last one, the last one, it was more, it wasn't changing the intent of the language. It looked like they were recommending just to rearrange the way we, we wrote the, the list of what would be required as far as the planning components. So... So the board didn't feel like it was really necessary to do. They wanted to keep the way they wrote it.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just for the record, because this is a second public hearing, I just want to get it on the record that proper legal notice was established, and it was published in the News Herald in a timely manner at the same time as the first public hearing.
Thank you for confirming that. Okay, like to open it up to public comment? Anybody in the audience that have any comment regarding these, these, these proposed changes? Nobody in the audience? Anybody on the phone that would like to make a comment regarding this? Hearing none? I would like to close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, I would move to close the public hearing, number two, for text amendments.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing number two closed. So are we...
We have about 10 minutes.